I'll call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. First on the agenda is a moment of reflection, which we will take a few seconds, a few moments to just reflect on the day, reflect on family, life. Whatever. Thank you. Thank you. Would you please try to join us, please, for allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, I will add one thing to the consent agenda, and that is asking council's approval to sign the proclamation for naming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We've done this many years in the past.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Under public hearings, we have a street vacation request from Invest Square LLC for an ordinance to vacate an approximately 3,800 square foot portion of right-of-way along North Franklin Street located between 850 North Franklin Street, tax map number 496-181, and 900 North Franklin Street, tax map number 496182. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Yes, sir. If you come to the podium, name and address, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Jerry Petzel. I'm from 221 Cumberland Street, Kingsport, Tennessee, and I appreciate your time to address this vacating and share with you while requesting it. I have a handout for each of you if I could give that to you.
Thanks, sir.
I guess lucky to tell, I did go out there.
Pretty close to it. Do you need one?
No. I've got memorized.
I'm a commercial real estate broker and I represent a group out of Nashville called Trident Corporation. They own and develop Captain D restaurants, secret restaurants. They own 33, have franchise rights to building number 20, one we hope to build right here in Christiansburg. I spent the last year, a little bit more than that, looking for sites in and around Blacksburg and Christiansburg, learning the market. Now we finally found the right location. The challenge that we have is we've got to create the site. It's a very challenging site from a engineering perspective, but we've been able to engineer it to make it work. But it also has some challenges, one being a right-of-way that encroaches into the site and shown on the site plan in the path. It's shaded gray, it would be pretty obvious, and that would preclude the development of the site because your setbacks have to be from the perimeter of that right-of-way. Part of the building has to sit on it. There's a sewer line that goes into the property that we were able to engineer, re-engineer so it doesn't have to be relocated. And so it's a very, one of the most challenging sites, I guess, I've worked on. And we're hoping that we'll be able to complete the transaction. The Captain D Corporate in Arizona, they have been in the market, they've seen the location, they've approved the location. The Invest Square is the developer, investor out of Israel. They finance the Captain D's projects and then they own them and then they lease them to Trident, who operate them. It's a very good team and my job is, I'm the scout out front trying to find the sites. So that's why I'm here tonight and they're not. Anyone have any questions that I might address? This particular store is in Whitley, Virginia, and that was completed about four or five months ago. It took 18 months from the time we started to deal with all the things that you have to deal with. It's about a million and a half dollar investment that takes to prepare a site, build a building, open it up. It'll do retail sales of a million, two, a million, five a year in terms of revenue generation, creates local jobs for people, and they'll be there 20 years or more. All their stores, they've had some stores that they've owned for over 20 years and they continue to refresh them. Sometimes they have to bulldoze and build a new store. And I'm sure you may have seen some McDonald's around here where they just leveled the site and built it brand-new because the market changed and styles changed and the buildings wear out. So that being said, again, be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I make a comment on behalf of the street committee. Mr. Collins and I, along with our staff reviewed this particular request a couple weeks ago. And just for council's benefit, to put things in perspective, this is where you see the blue area that Mr. Petzel's mentioning is the old G&amp;H appliance building.
And the Canoe property. And the Canoe property. You're purchasing both, hopefully?
Both.
Both the old G&amp;H building, as I call it, and then the Canoe house?
Those will be raised, along with the mini storages in the back. It's a five-acre tract. There's wetlands in the back, which has also created some challenges because of creating slopes. And right now, it's really close to the bottom of the slope, very close to the edge where it falls off to the wetlands. Have no plan for the wetlands, and there's an opportunity of donating to the public entity for a donation letter. If you have any interest in preserving green space in wetlands, that opportunity is certainly alive and to make that happen.
And the street committee's recommendation to go along with that is to grant the request because the property has no use for the town. And the property interest for the easement is going to be protected for the sanitary sewer.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to add that to the council's benefit.
Now, the store is going to be right there where the house is right now, or where's the whole stuff, the whole spot?
Where the existing right-of-way is actually on the ground, it'll be to the north of it. So yes, it may actually be where the house is, where the new restaurant location, the actual building will actually sit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It'll sit on the side way because it wasn't deep enough, couldn't make the engineering work on it. And sometimes you have to do that to get a more exposure to the highway. And they do a nice job in landscaping and they take very good care of the property, very good operators.
Very good.
Well, we just wanted to welcome you here to Christiansburg and appreciate your coming and I think that you will find this a great community to set up.
Thank you very much, Congressman. We ask that you approve this vacating request.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to this?
Hi, I'm Scott Mullin, 320 Turpin Walk in Christiansburg. I'm here representing the seller of the property, and I just want to reiterate the seller really requests that you approve what they're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, I will close this public hearing. We will now move to the consent agenda, which consists of six items. It's council minutes of March 26th. Resolution in recognition of Craig Moore for his service at the Planning Commission. Resolution declaring April 14th through the 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunion Telecommunicators Week. Contract with Barry Dunn for business technology assessment. Scheduled a public hearing for May 28, 2019 for a resuming request by Tim Lawson, agent for M&amp;T Development LLC, for an opportunity for approximately 1.4 acre property located at 825 Park Street, Northeast Tax Map Number 498-A-83. From I-2 General Industrial District to the I-1 Limited Industrial District property is designated as mixed use with buffer industrial and future land use plan, Plan 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. And the one that I mentioned earlier is a resolution to signify the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Make a motion when you approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any comments, questions, suggestions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Schallalter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slives?
Aye.
That is six, zero. Thank you. Under introductions, presentations, I want to ask Craig Moore if you'd come up to the podium. Good to see you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Whereas Craig Moore served on the Christiansburg Planning Commission from 2006 to 2018, whereas Craig Moore served as the vice chairman of the Planning Commission from 2008 to 2009, and served as chairperson of the Planning Commission from 2010 to 2018. Whereas during this time, the Planning Commission, in his leadership roles, Christiansburg saw impressive growth, and Craig Moore was instrumental part of reviewing and drafting the town's comprehensive plans, resigning these conditional use permits amendments to the zoning ordinance and other general planning and land issue uses. Whereas his 12-plus years of service in the town of Christiansburg, Craig Moore distinguished himself with professionalism, sincerity, and dedication, and was a role model for fellow commissioners and staff members alike. And therefore, now therefore being resolved, Christiansburg Town Council meeting a regular session on April 9, 2019. Formerly recognized Craig Moore for serving on the Planning Commission and thanks him for his dedication to the community. Craig?
Thank you. It's been an honor, sir. (APPLAUSE). Well, very much. Really appreciate it. Started the region back in 1999 and moved to Christiansburg in 2000, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve you all and to work with staff and to work for the citizens here. I really have thoroughly enjoyed that. And sorry that I hadn't been able to continue on, but some other things have come up that I've had to deal with, and I really appreciate you all having me back tonight. So, good, thank you all.
I'm pretty sure the door's always open.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks.
Governor General, I was the liaison officer for the Planning Commission for several years while Craig was the head of it, and Craig just did an outstanding job, week in and week out. And just all the people who came to the Planning Commission were just felt so good about the quality of work that he did, and it made everybody feel better, and me for first person, for sure. But Craig, thanks a lot for all you've done.
And I'd like to say that I've worked with Craig on the Planning Commission since 2012. He's taught me a lot. He's one of the smartest men I know, is a great asset to the town, and please come back soon, buddy.
Very good. Again, thank you, Craig, for your job well done. Next, we have Ms. Sarah Hanks, Executive Director of Wonder Universe. A children's museum provide an update on the museum.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. It's a pleasure to share a little bit more about the museum and our next steps as we relocate to Christiansburg. I have to begin by saying it's been a fantastic partnership thus far. We feel warmly welcomed here in Christiansburg and really appreciate the support we've received thus far, both from the mall, the tenants in the area, our families, and from the town staff and council members. We're excited about this next phase of our work. We anticipate beginning renovations, we hope, the end of April or early May, which will provide us an opportunity to be operational at the New River Valley Mall by late summer. I use that term tentatively until we have our plans from the general contractor to confirm that timeline. We'll be occupying, for your reference, the food court, installing a 300-foot by 20-foot wall to enclose that space, as well as occupying the Charlotte Russe storefront that's adjacent. The storefront window will be removed to create a passer access for both of those spaces. The total square footage is just under 15,000 square feet. That's approximately three times the square footage that we occupied in Blacksburg, and we're excited to be able to finish that space in a way that allows families throughout the region an opportunity to engage in playful learning. You know a lot of the data about play, and several of you joined us today for our Power and Play Lunch, and where Craig and Collins have had you. Play is essential for early childhood. It is the work of a young child, and especially that we note 90% of brain development occurs in the first five years of life. Providing resource-rich play spaces for our families across the region is really essential. We know that there are 10,000 children birth to age five in the New River Valley, of which over 7,000 do not have a placement in any early childhood education programs. Those lack of spaces and resources makes informal networks like our museum really essential for families. That only is to provide the resources they may not have in their homes. It equips and empowers caregivers to serve as their child's first and best teacher, creating opportunities for education and playful learning to extend after they leave our space. I want to spend just a few minutes noting there are exhibit sketches being passed around. We're excited about what those exhibits will mean for our community and the ways in which we'll be able to engage in play. Speaking in terms of our numbers, we had over 23,000 guests visit in 2018. Again, we were operational for about 27 hours a week and had about 3,500 square feet of floor space accessible to our guests. We anticipate within 18 months of operations that we'll be able to exceed 65,000 guests walking through our doors each year, creating not only an economic benefit to the region, but also contributing to the future workforce and the ability for companies and corporations in our community to recruit and retain young, talented families. In addition to serving over 23,000 guests in the museum, we encountered almost 3,000 guests in seven community engagement events we facilitated last year, and welcomed over 130 individuals via our Museums for All Initiative. Any family receiving SNAP and EBT benefits are admitted for free to our museum. You shouldn't have to pay to play. We want to create opportunities for all kids. As we think about how play will be different in our museum, I hope you note the complexity and simplicity of the exhibits that we're proposing. We've worked with Jova DeSarmoneta at Blacksburg to create the scope of our museum, as well as with museum experts throughout the region, who've weighed in on opportunities for us to make the NRV a destination within southwest Virginia. So as we have an opportunity to move forward in this next step, we appreciate your consideration of our budget proposal this year. I'm happy to entertain any questions about that, about our operations and next steps. But before I do, I'd like to introduce Erica Rollo. Erica and her family have been members of the museum for some time, and I'd like for her to be able to share the impact of their family's experience with us.
Okay, I'm Erica, I'm a resident here in Christiansburg. And while Sarah brought her fancy, nice drawings, my son drew a drawing that he asked me to share, so if you want to pass that around. There's his drawing of the museum area. We love living in Christiansburg. My kids have a day, they want to go to the library, they want to go to the park, they want to go to the Aquatic Center, Virginia Techniques, the festivals downtown. They think it's so fun to go out to eat, all the different places. They love all the things about living here. But part of our weekly routine until a few months ago was going to the children's museum once a week. They miss it, and I didn't realize how much they were going to miss it until the doors had to close for renovations and things. When I asked my kids what they missed, my three-year-old said all the things a three-year-old would say. He said, "I miss the dinosaurs, I miss the trains, I miss the sensory bins, or I can stick my fingers in beans." I miss, but what he mostly said he missed was this big skeleton that hangs on the wall where he can point to all the bones, and he says all the wrong names. You know, he's still pointing to them and saying a name of a boat, which I think is really cool. And then my six-year-old has a totally different perspective, because going to the children's museum at the same time of the week, he made friends there, and he learned how to interact with kids. And in going to these creative spaces, he didn't learn just how to play, how he wanted to play. He thought, "Hey, that kid uses that thing differently than I do. Let me figure out how he does that. Let me build a big, huge structure with them out of blue blocks, and then he'll be a superhero and play in it, and then wear my costume and go listen to someone read me a story." And so all those things are just creatively integrating into their play, and then you even realize all the things that they're learning. And the thing that really stands out to me is my son, who I think is a genius, because everyone thinks their kid is a genius, right? He has some struggles. He goes to occupational therapy, where they work with him with some sensory things. He's very reluctant with his fine motor skills. And a year ago, if I were to say, "Hey, draw me a picture," he would get a red crayon, his favorite color, swipe it twice and call it a day. But when he was at the children's museum, he made me like these big elaborate art products, said, "Mommy, hang this on the refrigerator." He'd cut something out and say, "Can we keep this? I'm so proud of this." He made me an "I love you mommy" picture. So he's so proud of the things that he could do there as he interacts, that he doesn't even realize all the learning that he's doing. So thank you for supporting my kid learning through play at the children's museum. And that's why he wanted that picture to go around. He drew his superhero, he drew the art table, and then his little brother convinced him to draw that skeleton for all of you to see. So thank you for your support of this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Erica highlights that families belong in our museum. Not only are we a trusted partner, but they develop relationships with each other, building that informal network of, "Hey, your kid," and "Hey, my child," and "How do we solve these problems together?" But learning side by side really is an invaluable asset, both for our kids and for our parents. Are there any questions I can address for council at this time?
That's on the wall. Was that a painting of fish, or is that an aquarium?
Great question. That's actually our sensory space. We'll be the only certified autism center in southwest Virginia. So that whole space is designed to support children who learn differently. That is a mirror, which will actually have vinyl appliques on it. It's extended by a bubble tube for relaxation and focus, and the rock associated with those mirrors has fiber optic lights that will extend from them. We've tried to create a space that offers therapeutic benefits. Families who have children with autism or autism spectrum disorders are limited to the occupational therapy they're able to access just once a week or bi-weekly, as both their insurance schedule and the availability of services. We want to create a space where any family can come in and continue the learning and growth that they might have as a benefit from therapy in the therapeutic space that's open to all.
I have a question. Is that just for children 1 to 5, or is that for children, can you help older children?
Great question. While our target in Blacksburg really focused on that birth-to-age-five demographic, moving to the New River Valley Mall with this expanded space gives us an opportunity to serve kids up through age 10. While most museums say eight is the top range, we're pushing for that age 10 through fifth grade because there are so many important SOLs connected to hands-on learning, and we partnered with teachers to know that there are important ways we can influence their learning even into those later elementary years. So we're excited to not only expand our geographic service area, but know that more families and all children will have a great place to play.
All right. Thank you.
Very nice presentation.
Any questions, council?
Thank you so much for your support. Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thanks, Sarah.
Next, we have Casey Edmonds and Jalen Diggs of New River Community Action to present on their work with homelessness.
Hello, my name is Casey Edmonds, and I am from New River Community Action. I am the Housing and Homeless Programs Coordinator. We want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of our programs and what we do for the New River Valley and for the town of Christiansburg. I want to thank Mr. Sam Bishop for the invitation to come and speak this evening about our programs. And I'd also like to introduce, and she will stand for me, this is Jalen Diggs. She is our Rapid Rehousing Counselor. So, who we are. We are New River Community Action. We are the Housing and Homeless Programs. New River Community Action Homeless and Housing Programs assists households experiencing homelessness and those at risk of homelessness in the New River Valley. The agency's Rapid Rehousing and Homeless Prevention Services allow households to either maintain or to move into affordable, safe, and stable housing. Housing counselor staff work with households developing a budget, securing services, and coordinating housing and service plans, including households in default or working toward, or working to avoid foreclosure. How do we define homelessness? Well, when we work with HUD, HUD has four broad categories of homelessness. The first one is people who are living in a place that is not meant for human habitation or in an emergency shelter, in transitional housing, or existing or exiting an institution where they temporarily resided. And for us, that means that is Rapid Rehousing, which is Jalen. She is the one that works with that population of folks. The second one is people who are losing their primary nighttime residence, which may include a motel or hotel. It may include a doubled-up situation where they have to be out within 10 days. And for us, that is our homeless prevention program. And Dana's not here with us this evening, but she does homeless prevention. The other two categories are more, there are different categories, and we don't really address those two categories. How we help. Homeless and housing programs provide limited financial assistance to individuals and families experiencing a housing crisis. So for Rapid Rehousing, that means clients must be literally homeless. The HUD category number one, living in a place not meant for human habitation, living on the streets, living in a shelter, living in a bus station, living in a campground, in a tent, or a place like that. They're prioritized based on their previous homeless experiences and the number of months that they've experienced homelessness in the current episode. So they could have up to four episodes within, or up to four episodes within three to four years, or they could have a total of 12 months, and it really is different for each individual. Other factors can include mental illness, the number of convictions that they may have, their disability, current health issues, et cetera. The greater the need and the more barriers, the higher the priority. No income eligibility limits in the first three months. That means when someone first comes to us, if they are literally homeless, they do not have an income, there's not an income eligibility. As long as they are homeless, then they meet the requirements for the program. Okay? Homeless prevention. Individuals and families experiencing a housing crisis resulting in eviction or loss of their housing situation. So these clients must be within 10 days of homelessness and shelter is the only option. Clients must have depleted all natural supports and resources. Clients must be income-eligible, cannot exceed 30% of the annual median income, and clients must have unlawful detainer and have been to court to meet eligibility. Or clients must have presented proof that their current living situation will end in 10 days. And what that means is if their living doubled up, and whoever they're living with says, "Hey, you are jeopardizing my living condition, so you're going to have to leave here and you've got 10 days to be out," then we can assist those folks as well. Barriers to housing. What factors prevent permanent, stable, and affordable housing? Okay. The family serves. The current year, July 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2019, the Rapid Rehousing Program has served 45 families throughout the New River Valley. 12 of those families were in McDougal County. And as of March 31st, 2019, Rapid Rehousing has provided $59,625 in rental assistance, security deposits, and utility payments, including deposits. So we can pay their security deposits, we can pay their utility deposits, and if they're in desperate need, we can also pay those utility So these clients must be within 10 days of homelessness, and shelter is the only option. Clients must have depleted all natural supports and resources. Clients must be income-eligible, cannot exceed 30% of the annual median income, and clients must have unlawful detainer and have been to court to meet eligibility. Or clients must have presented proof that their current living situation will end in 10 days. And what that means is if they're living doubled up, and whoever they're living with says, "Hey, you are jeopardizing my living condition, so you're going to have to leave here, and you've got 10 days to be out," then we can assist those folks as well. Barriers to housing. What factors prevent permanent, stable, and affordable housing? Okay. The families served. The current year, July 1st, 2018, through March the 31st of 2019, the Rapid Rehousing Program has served 45 families throughout the New River Valley. 12 of those families were in Montgomery County. And as of March 31st, 2019, Rapid Rehousing has provided $59,625 in rental assistance, security deposits, and utility payments, including deposits. So we can pay their security deposits, we can pay their utility deposits, and if they're in desperate need, we can also pay those utility payments and rental payments each month. Prevention has provided assistance to 30 families throughout the New River Valley, and 11 of those families were in Montgomery County. As of March 31st, 2019, Homeless Prevention has provided $80,884 in rental assistance. That includes rent arrears, because with our homeless prevention program, we can pay up to six months of rent arrears. So if they are that far behind, we can pay those to get them caught up to maintain their housing situation. That also can include utility payments to get them caught up or to keep them caught up as well. With the homeless prevention, folks, they have to meet the 30% AMI, and with both programs, they are recertified every three months to make sure that they meet that eligibility requirement to maintain or stay in the programs. We also offer housing services, where we look to see what other services or resources in the community that we can offer these folks, whether they may need insurance, or whether they need a job, employment, they may need SNAP, or what other community resources, whether it's mental health resources, we help those get better resources as well. Okay, barriers to locating housing. With the population of people we serve, there are three ways that they can, that are barriers to their housing situation. One is a low credit score or poor credit history. The second is a criminal background, and then third is previous convictions. All of these areas tend to be big barriers for the folks that we serve, because they tend to fall within one, if not more, of these categories. And many of the local housing options require the background check, or they require the credit check. So it becomes very difficult to house some folks. Barriers to community services. As we all know, transportation can be a barrier in the New River Valley. A lot of folks that live in, a lot of your homeless population live in campgrounds, and they live in other areas that are more remote, so they do not have access to transportation to get to the services that they need, or to get to housing, to get to work, to get to whatever it is that they may need. Service awareness. Many of the folks that we serve are not aware of all the other services that are out there that they may be available or eligible to receive. And the third one is healthcare. Folks that have limited amount of healthcare, and they're also in need of, the lack of healthcare can prevent them from going to work in those situations. Households experiencing housing cost burden. If you will look at that one, and I know it's kind of small, and I apologize for that, but this is Montgomery County on the one side, and if you will look at that, for families that make less than $20,000 a year, that is a 93.9%, 96%, excuse me, that's a 96% ratio of folks who are housing cost burdened. Now, to be housing cost burdened, what that means is that more than 30% of their income goes towards their housing. So they might be paying in excess of 50, 60, or even for some folks, as much as 80% of their income goes just towards their housing. And when we talk about housing, we're not just talking about the rent amount. We're also talking about those utility payments that are falling to meet that housing as well. And of course, the minimum wage, if you'll see right there, minimum wage is $725, and it takes... At $725, it would be $377 a month would be the amount that they could pay towards their housing if they maintained that 30%. And if you will look at the bottom, we have the annual income need for affordability. For a zero bedroom in Montgomery County, they would need $26,680 a year to get just a zero bedroom. That's considering efficiency. For a one-bedroom apartment, folks, we need to make $30,880 a year to be able to afford a one-bedroom in Montgomery County. And when we look at... Two issues that increase homelessness. One is the lack of affordable housing. Many areas throughout the New River Valley lack enough housing communities to accommodate the number of folks that we see coming into our programs. We're seeing an increase in the number of referrals that we're receiving, and differences in the number of people that we can find housing for. And then the second is the lack of employment. Finding employment that pays wages to accommodate area fair market rents is challenging in rural communities, because part of our programs, they have to meet fair market rent in order for us to be able to assist them. And then, what is affordable? If you look at that up at the top, and again, I apologize, it's rather small. For Montgomery County, the minimum wage is $377. One-bedroom fair market rent in Montgomery County is $772. So there's a huge gap right there in someone who makes minimum wage, and how much they could afford a month in a rental. The hours of minimum wage for a one-bedroom apartment, it would take 82 hours for someone to, at a minimum wage, to be able to afford a one-bedroom apartment in Montgomery County. And then there is a little graph right there that shows that Montgomery County and Radford, you can see the peak in those two areas in our housing cost, and that is due to the fact that both of those areas are university areas, so the housing is much more pricey in those areas. A tenant earning $12.50 per hour in a full-time job can afford how much rent per month? So we base this on their 30% income. So this is just a little bit of a math equation right here to show you how much, or how we calculate what people can afford in housing at that 30%. You take the $1,250, and you multiply that by 40, so that gives them $26,000 a year. When we divide that by 12, that's the $2,167, which multiplied by the 30% is $650 a month. But we have to take that $650 a month, and we do a utilities allowance with these folks. So based on their utility allowance, then we have to subtract their utility allowance away from that monthly rent. So if we're saying that they're going to get $150 a month utility allowance, then they need to find a rental apartment within $500 to be able to afford, or to be in affordable And that's the end of my presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I have two questions. What is the source of your funding?
We get funding through state and federal grants. We have, we have two, we have several different grants where we get funding through the Rapid Rehousing and the Homeless Prevention. We have a VHSP grant through the DHCD, and that allows them to have, allows us to have so much money per program for the housing. It's both state and federal funding.
And the second question I have, do you find it difficult to find housing for, for people of this nature, and maybe where, where do you find it mostly?
We do find it difficult to find housing for folks who are in that minimum wage bracket, or for folks that are earning less than $20,000 a year. And actually, what we tend to end up doing is looking to private landlords, because the private landlords, like we had discussed earlier, those barriers into entry where folks have convictions, where they have low credit scores, those barriers can prevent them from getting into public housing, which public housing is more ideal, because then they can get an income-based housing. But the income-based housing lines are long, and so are your Section 8 voucher lines are also rather long. So we look to private landlords to be able to find housing for folks.
You're saying like, they can maybe stay at part of my house, or something like that? Is that the way you look at it?
We, you can do that, private landlords. Private landlords are folks who are renting like mobile homes, or renting their homes. It's not like corporate, where you've got a whole facility or project-based. Project-based is where folks are living in a unit, and everybody in that unit generally makes the same amount of money, or they're both, they're all income-based units. So private landlords are someone who may be renting out a house, or renting out a trailer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Do you have a waiting list at this time?
We do have a waiting list, yes. Jalen, just recently, we received an increase in some funding, so she recently did give a little increase, but it's got to be an additional $14,000 from the DHCD for Rapid Rehousing. So we're able to open up our waiting list and house a few more folks, but yes, we did have, we did have a waiting list this year. Any other questions? All right, thank you all very much, and we appreciate that opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Casey. Next, on the agenda is Finance Director Val Swinney to present the draft annual budget for 2019, 2020.
Thanks for taking the time tonight. I'll try and keep this short and as painless as possible. Budget's always a difficult task every year, so. With that, just real quick, we're going to go over the general layout of the budget document, see how to get through it, understand where things are. I think all of you have been around the block on the budget at least one year now, so I won't elaborate or spend a lot of time on that, but this will give you a reference document to look at. We'll go through the highlights of the budget, what the primary changes are in revenues, expenditures, staffing, capital projects, and the five-year forecast and the assumptions associated with that. As usual, the budget started out with directors making a request, and then we kind of went through all those budgets, had a lot of meetings and discussions, made additions and deletions that we deemed were appropriate. Kept in mind destination 2022, as we were focusing on what the goals and the priorities were with things that should be funded, and tried to present you with a budget that was sustainable within the constraints of our funding. The general layout of the document, you have a table of contents, which gives you a reference page for each of the sections and all the schedules in the document. The executive summary with the major changes in the budget is under Tab 1, and we have those pages numbered, then after that, a bunch of pages for the organizational chart, boards, commissions, and advisory boards. And Exhibit 1 is under Tab 2, and that's the summary of all the funding sources and uses. It's a super condensed format that we'll look at real quickly. Oops! There we go. So this is a little small, but this is what you have in your document, so it's just a quick summary of the total numbers in the budget, what the total revenues are for the general fund. Turn my page, because I have great new glasses. However, they're not that good. So for 2020, we're projecting $30.2 million in revenue, $28.7 in operating expenses for the general fund. Then there is $3.8 million in capital acquisitions. We're going to use some reserve funds of $1,080, $1,020 of that is for fire truck, which we have been building the fire truck savings for a while, and taking all our Virginia program fire funds, and setting those aside to be able to acquire a ladder truck and engines down the road, which have now appeared in the budget. Support for the cemeteries, $220,000. Government capital projects are $2.00, almost $2.9 million. Support for water enterprise capital projects is $1.8 million. Stormwater, $235,000. So total support to all the funds are $5.1 million. So we'll be rolling over project funds of $6.4 million, putting another $925,000 into reserves this year. So we'll end with a fund balance of about $13.9 million. Our required reserve fund balance, based on our policy of maintaining 35%, is $13.5. So we have some excess there. This is just a quick chart of our budgeted revenues. This is also in the budget document. It's just a quick look at where our funding comes from. As you can see, about 14% of this year's budget comes from meals tax, 14% is coming from grants for capital projects that we have ongoing, and 21% comes from the water and sewer fund. And those are the largest resources. The others get to be pretty small slivers in the pie. And then where our funds go. The biggest percentage of our funding gets spent on public safety, which is nearly 20%. Water and wastewater, which is about 15%, and public work, which is almost 14%. Administrative costs are about 7%. A lot of our capital projects, of course, take up a big section of the pie. We have a lot of grant funding that supports those, and that's about 17.4% of the existing budget. So this page, I'm not going to go over all of this. This is just kind of the summary of everything that's under each tab, so that when you're trying to get through the budget document, you can refer back to this that will help you remember where some of these things are in the budget document. Some of the revenue highlights in the budget, revenue changes, we're projecting an increase of about 3.6%. The tax rate proposed is to remain unchanged for 2020, which is at currently 16 cents per hundred. The recommendation is that it stay at 16 cents per hundred. The revenue neutral tax would be 15.2 cents per hundred. And that revenue neutral is because we've gotten a bump in the real estate taxes based on the reassessments of this year. So you have to do a revenue neutral, which would be 15.2 cents, I think it was, 15.26 cents per hundred. Or it's essentially a tax increase, but it's the same tax rate. This is the same position that Montgomery County's in this year as well. And they are maintaining their rate at 89 cents per hundred. There's no new debt proposed in the budget this year. There is a proposal for a $1 increase for 1,000 gallons of water. This is per a rate study that was conducted back in 2017, that primarily has resulted from the new debt that's having to go into the water authority to rebuild the water plant. And those, their increases in their water rates were not evenly distributed. So like this year, the increase is 9 cents, but last year it was 51 cents. But our rates didn't follow along with that. It was determined when we did the rate study, that we'd try and make our revenue increases as even as possible, our rate increases as even as possible going forward. There's no proposed increase in the sewer fees for this year. And then there's some increases in the building and plan review fees, and those are detailed in the budget document. On the expenditure side, there were requests for three new staff positions. These were presented to the Finance Committee, and all three have been included in the budget. This will bring our total full-time count to 256. The new positions that were added were a network administrator, a property maintenance person, and a radio technician. This draft does include a 2% merit and 2% COLA increase for employees, however. This morning, my sincerest apologies to the Finance Committee. We misunderstood their recommendation, and we included it at 2 and 2, and their intention was that it be at 1 and 2. So our sincerest apologies for that. We, I have recalculated it. I wasn't able to recalculate it, redo the draft before tonight's meeting, but reducing that to 1% would reduce the operating cost by $113,660. We also included in this budget the implementation of the compensation plan that we looked at this year. The original numbers that we presented for the comp plan were extremely high. We went back, and Dave Branstrad, our HR director, will spend a little time with you guys in work session to explain how we got there, but we reduced some of the midpoints in the grids and got it down to, I think his last presentation to the Finance Committee was about $175,000, but it's really, when I worked it into the budget, it's only about $150,000, because some of those affected people are no longer here. The people affected by this is a total of 75 employees, 52 of which are in public works, three are in finance, five in police, three in engineering, six in aquatics, and several other administrative departments. And as I said, we can spend some more time on that in work session. We also had a really high increase in our insurance premiums this year to about 11%. We had originally looked at passing that on as increased contributions to employees, but we really felt that after last year's effort to really get those costs down, and to get them into affordable ranges that our employees could manage, especially in the lower-income positions, that we would hold it this year, really work on educating employees about the cost of healthcare, not using ER when you shouldn't, how to be a better producer or purchaser of your healthcare, that you can kind of help shop your healthcare costs. So that'll be a big focus this year during the enrollment period. And we also want to make it clear that, you know, we can't continue to do that, so we can't keep costs down. We are going to have to pass it on to the employees. But we wanted to give it another year to see if we can get the cost controlled to some degree. The budget also includes $19.6 The budget also includes $19.6 million in capital construction projects, which are covered with $7.9 million in grant-funded, $1.2 million in stormwater fees, and the remainder is funded with town funds and water and sewer funds. This is just kind of a quick list of some of the capital projects. Wayne will go over a lot of these in more depth with you at work session soon to come. So a bit of the transportation projects, Falling Branch intersection, North Franklin-Cambria interchange, the Roanoke Tower Road intersection signal, Arbor Drive and Pepper's Ferry intersection signal, the capital paving program, Crispin Mill road realignment, and some design work on the connector road. For trails and sidewalks, there's the Huckleberry Trail Phase 3, the Deepwater Park extension, Cambria Trail design, the Arbor Drive sidewalk, and two sections of Roanoke Street sidewalk from Robert to Reading and near the bypass.
No questions? This is just a review.
Water and wastewater projects are Edgewood Pump Station Phase 1, Buffalo Tank Rehab or Replacement, College Street Sewer Rehab, Silver Lake Interceptor, Carrollhead Basin and Rehab. And in stormwater, the North Franklin Street Drainage Improvement, the Downtown Watershed Study, the Christiansburg Industrial Park, stormwater management improvements, and Hick Park Street improvements Phase 1. And of course, we're continuing to work on the Truman-Wilson property development. The five-year forecast includes faster growth and inflation for all years of about 2% and a small tax increase in 2022 to help funding aging infrastructure. The proposed water increase in 2020 is included in the forecast, as well as small annual increases in 2020 to 2022 that relate back to the rate study that we performed several years back. Program growth and expansion of services, except as provided in the actual 2020 budget, are not here, except that we did include in 2021 and beyond some increases in revenue and operating expenses and debt for the proposed park. Design and engineering construction costs for Truman-Wilson property are not included in the budget at this time because we did not have adequate information to do that, but that's something we certainly are discussing and in the works on that discussion. The forecast also assumes that we'll continue to receive grants and capital funding for a number of street, trail, and stormwater projects, that we will continue to set aside funds for specific projects that are designated or assigned reserves, and that we will need to incur debt to fund needed capital for water and sewer projects, as well as the development of the Truman-Wilson property. Available resources over the next five years for capital will not sustain the rate that new project development currently projected in the next five years. Careful consideration by council of the priorities of future projects will be required to balance available funds with desired projects. Next steps, where are we? We need to set public budget work sessions with the council. We have a number of items, of course, to discuss. One, of course, would be COLA, the new positions, the insurance, community support programs, and the comp study. Thank you. I knew this was something. So those will all be subjects of discussion for the work sessions with council. We will need to set a public hearing for the water increase in the first meeting in May. There is a 21-day notice requirement on that. We will also need to set a public hearing for the tax rate for the first meeting in May. That has a 30-day notice requirement. And then we'll need to set a public hearing on the budget for the first meeting in May, or perhaps the second meeting in May would be a little bit better because that only has a seven-day notification on it. And then, of course, we'll set the final budget after the council work sessions and the public hearing in late May, and approve the budget by early June. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Phil. All right, this is our citizens' comments section, where you are encouraged to come before council, discussing any issues that you might have. We ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you are limited to three minutes. Anyone here to address council?
Hello, my name is Johanna Hex. I'm the owner of 123 and 121 North Franklin Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. We're here across the street from Peak Sayin. There has been several issues that we had had, which some of those issues have been brought up to you guys for the last several weeks, as far as the noise disturbance at night for our tenants on apartments 100, 200, 300, and 400 located at the same location. And then there is the smell issues coming out of sewer pipes now into the building. And then there is the other concern, which is huge, the roaches and the mice that are showing up out of the, all the sinks and all the showers and the bathroom floors and everything else that are showing up from the sewer stuff that you guys are replacing downtown Christiansburg. Now, with the noise disturbance, I know some of the things can be changed a little bit to alleviate some of the noises that are coming out, well, the machines are doing at night. One of those, the contractors that you guys are using, some of them, we have brought this to their attention. They're not very nice. The tenants that we have that live on those locations have spoken to them, we have spoken to them, and it seems to be that they don't care. And so now we have the issue that our tenants want to leave because the noises, they cannot sleep. There's beeping all night. And it's not really the construction work that is really becoming the big issue right now, it's really the fact that they are parking their trucks and they are loading and unloading rock and gravel right in front of our building. And that's posing the biggest problem for us because when those trucks are trying to load and unload the loads of gravel at night, it's making those horrible beeping sounds that are going beep, 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 beep all night long. So we have not been able to sleep because our tenants are calling us at 1 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning, and leaving the speaker phones up to the noises so we can hear it. And I can tell it's not fun. And so we're asking for help, one, for you guys to take care of the roaches and the mice issue. We have been doing whatever we can, setting up trucks in the building. There has only been two mice so far, which are very tiny, but the roaches is a big issue. We had someone from the town come to our building today. They said that they're going to ask you guys to see if you guys will pay for a pest control company to come out, which we're really wanting for that to happen because it's not fair that we're having to pay the consequences for this. You know, we're doing whatever we can. We have been doing it for the last four weeks, and right now is time for the towns to step up and help us out with this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else to address council? Hearing none. Close the citizens' comments section. We go into committee reports, any reports of any committee activity this week?
Yes, central business has been talking about new art installments downtown and in Cambria, and we are very excited about that. So we hope soon that we will have some examples of what's intended and where. And also the farmer's market. Casey Jenkins has been working really hard to get it vibrant and get more vendors and more entertainment, and I think he's done a great job. Our next meeting is after our next council meeting on a Wednesday at noon up here in the conference room, so please attend if you can.
So tomorrow or?
The next.
Okay, too much. Very good. Thank you.
I wanted to make a couple of comments concerning the Aquatic Center, and I wanted to mention that they had a sectional meet at the Aquatic Center, not last weekend, but the weekend before, and there were 650 swimmers there, and they stayed there for three nights. So, and they're all from several different states around. I also wanted to mention that every summer, the Aquatic Center has a summer camp, and they hold it for eight weeks, and they have about 50 kids each week, and it goes from 7:30 in the morning to 5:30 in the afternoon, and all eight weeks, they're full right now, and there is a waiting list on doing it. And unfortunately, they do not have the space or the people to increase that at all. I also wanted to mention that the Aquatic Center is going to have a yard sale, like they've had the last, this is the third year, and it's going to be on May 4th, and I believe it goes from 7:00 in the morning until noon. And if you want to get lots, $25, and want to get two, you can, it costs you $35, and so it'll be on May 4th. And then there's the H2O Hokeys are going to have a swim meet on the 10th to the 12th, and there's going to be about 400 kids into that. Mr. Caldwell, have I forgotten anything?
The yard sales fees were different, they're 10 and 15.
10 and 15, okay. Thanks, I'll thank you.
Mr. Stipes? I have a brief report from the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport Committee met earlier today, actually, at 3:30, and the request for a bump from $50,000 to $60,000 this year has been rescinded for this year and is due to, the main capital project that's coming up is jet fuel storage, but that project is going to be delayed slightly. I won't go into more details, but, so the $10,000 additional funds is not going to be requested this year, but it'll be, stay tuned for next year, but it's related to some capital projects they have. So that's a $10,000 decrease in that request this year.
Mr. Showalter?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. Let's see, next, Saturday, the rec department will be holding productive for the coaches and clinics for the coaches, Marty or?
All the teams will play.
All, say again, please?
All teams will play on opening day.
Okay, next Saturday at Hark Raider. Okay, and one other question I have is, where do we stand with the Christiansburg, Ohio side? Have you seen they've been done with that or?
Haven't done anything with it.
Nothing been done?
We sent a lot of material and things up there, but as far as any follow-up to them, of course, we haven't heard anything from them either.
We did send them, I guess, some, I guess, kind of commemorative Christiansburg memorabilia from, I guess, some of our Bell Centennial Celebration, also, I guess, the reflections book. We also sent a couple of Dogwoods to them.
And we haven't heard anything back from them at all?
They did send a thank you, and we thanked them, but we haven't really been too much contact with them since.
Okay, thanks.
Under discussion and action by mayor and council, is there any feeling on council to vote on the presentation tonight, or do you want to wait through the normal two weeks on the street vacation request? Who doesn't want to oppose to it?
I have no opposition.
I don't either. Put it on agenda.
I would be okay with it as long as everybody else is.
I have more than a motion.
I form out in a motion.
I'll second it. Have a motion in a second. Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
At 6:00, it will be the first item for discussion by mayor and council, the First Amendment to Performance Agreement for Marketplace Redevelopment to extend completion date to March 30th, 2020. I believe this was discussed at our last council meeting.
Yes. I'll make a motion. We amend our performance agreement as requested to extend the completion date, also as requested, to March 30th, 2020.
All second. All right, any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
At 6:00, thank you. And the new addition to the street vacation request by Invest Square LLC for approximately 380 square foot portion of right-of-way along North Franklin Street. Do you have a motion? I'll make a motion. Motion second.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, discussion?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
At 6:00, thank you. And glad a good project for us now. Staff reports, town manager?
Just to bring up in regards to the construction across the PCN, that night work is believed scheduled for two more nights, tonight and tomorrow night will be the end of the night work, as I understand it. And also, I'll point out that I have had jury of him line reach out to property owner, and we are going to have exterminator look at the property tomorrow. Also, just bring up scheduling of public hearings, if you could. We'd like to set two public hearings for May the 14th, one for the water rates and also the second for the tax rates at 16 cents per 100.
That's for both of them?
That would be two separate public hearings.
Okay.
And I'd also like to set a public hearing for the budget on May 28th.
Is that agreeable? Okay. One of the things I guess we need to determine here at council is, we need a couple of dates. I'm sorry, Randy, you got that one next?
Yes, I'd like to suggest a budget work session, and, you know, I was hoping maybe the 16th, next Tuesday, if that's possible. Is everyone available?
Yeah, I was just saying, can we email? I respond.
Of what time?
Whenever council would want to start.
Can we go 5:30? Is that a good time? Because I know it'll be a long session.
I give you, I guess, some of the subjects in relation to the budget. Of course, the compensation study, COLA merit increase, presentations on the new positions, discussion of the tax rates and the water rates, and potentially capital projects and community support, although we may want to do two budget work sessions. I'll kind of leave that at your discretion. Also, if you would want to have other subjects, we do have just a potential presentation on meth labs, if you'd like that at some point.
At this point, is it okay to assume the 16th? And then if you're not able, if that's not a good night, would you email all of us and give us a list of dates within a day or two of that that would correspond?
About tomorrow morning.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow morning would be good. Well, the 16th, we have, no, we don't, okay. I'd like to have it tomorrow. Close of business tomorrow, how's that?
Do you have a preferred start time?
5:30, I think, is probably, I think that, don't know that it'll be an extra long one, but it's nice to get home from straight line square. All righty, anything else, Randy?
Also, we would need to have meeting in regards to the PPA proposals as council, and it'd basically be a closed meeting once we, I would like to do it as a special meeting Potentially hoping for April 30th. I know that's basically a week behind our original schedule, but still put us in the month of April.
I think that's plenty of time, Eric. It should be, yeah.
Yeah.
We are. We are, I guess, kind of requesting information from some of the proposers right now, so we.
Okay. That would fall in line with that, yeah.
Also, just.
So, you want us to write down, make the, April?
Yes, if you could, reserve April 30th. And also potentially May 7th, just in case we don't, nope, don't get done on the 30th. I think, I'll go ahead and suggest you reserve that.
For the same topic?
Yes.
So we just, we just want to come here every afternoon for about four hours and try to get it all done as much as we can on the basis.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
That's all, got it. Then I'll point out that we are going to reschedule the council retreat, have emailed you some potential dates, if you'd just let me know when those will work.
And they're going to, they are going to be a two-day during the week?
We're planning two days. If you don't want to do it during the weekday, I can see Kevin's availability on the weekend, if you'd like.
Can we do it Friday, Friday evening and Saturday?
I'll check and see if maybe.
That'd be great, I'm good.
Same dates will work on Saturday.
That hasn't worked out well, has it? Yeah. Sort of cool with the one-way jacket.
Randy, I'll look at the dates, but I'll just voice this to council, I'd really like this to be through the budget so that the retreat doesn't concentrate on this year's current budget, which, if we're right in the middle of it, the retreat will be dominated with, with budget talk, and the whole point of the retreat is a new vision, or the reviser vision.
We hope to pass the budget early June.
First meeting.
First meeting in June.
This one could vote on it.
So we'll, so we'll.
We could do it in May, but we'll already be basically done with the budget. Because if we do it too early, we'll concentrate too much on what we're going to do in work sessions coming up.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Popovich, town attorney?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Are there any other staff to report? Thank you. Council reports?
Today was a fabulous luncheon put on by the museum who just spoke tonight, so I wanted to thank them for extending the invitation. Some of us were able to attend. And also, has to go without saying, I'd like to congratulate UVA. It's still, it's still a Virginia State College, and I appreciate all the harmony.
I was at the museum thing today, too, and they did do a nice job. That's all I have.
Okay. Randy?
As soon as tech dropped out of Wahoo, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't comment tonight, but whatever's good for Charlottesville is good for Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Blacksburg and New River Valley. And so I actually appreciate you mentioning that, and I'm very happy to accept that.
Nope, nothing.
Yeah, I just want to touch on the presentation that Casey gave. But last year and this, and first part of this year, we had three information sessions at Asbury, and those sessions were very well-attended. And there are several other organizations that try to help the homelessness program. Someone's going to identify them to come to give us an overview of what they do. There might be only two or three or four other groups.
See, I meant to ask her, do you know what their backlog is, the number would be?
No, I was, I forgot to. I can find out and send you an email.
Randy?
That's it, I'm good.
You know, to piggyback on what Brad said, you know, about, once tech dropped out and became a Wahoo.
A Wahoo tonight.
35 years ago, I went to senior bank management school for three summers, a week and a summer, at the University of Virginia. And as soon as I graduated, I got that Dear Alumni, Send Me Money letter. It was the same way with LSU later on, but anyway, that's a, it's a strange, I think you may remember spit on, on campus somewhere, they're going to send you an alumni letter. All right, you know, if council reports any other business to come before council? Ms. Sachs, I need to visit with you for a couple of minutes in my office.
Sure.
We are adjourned?